One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistow? Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here.
Taylor Siphas and Sage Wayne?
Let the record show that Taylor and Sage are both involved in the school play, and that's why they're not here this evening. Citizens comments? We have no comment cards this evening, Mr. President. Presentation? Dr. Scott, we'd invite you down to the front table.
Thank you, Chris. And therefore, what the feds then report back out. Just a quick disclaimer, since we're dealing with data, I'm gonna try not to be like this guy. I don't have any accurate numbers, so I just made this one up. Studies have shown that accurate numbers aren't any more useful than the ones you make up. How many studies showed that? Eighty-seven. I am referencing all of my data sources. And the next several slides that I'm going to show you are from the ESEA, Elementary Secondary Education Act, federal reporting measures. And also, I'm gonna be referencing some data from the Pennsylvania School Performance Profile. And here's a, as we begin to go through some of these slides, please keep this question in mind, because we're gonna come back to it and keep looking at it. Very interesting, Michael Follin, he's a Canadian, North American researcher on school performance and school improvement. Something that we really do need to think about, it's easy to get lost, is that average performance of systems is not the most important factor. Rather, the gap between high and low performers is. And I want to take the next couple of slides to kind of bring that in focus with data. And if you can't see, don't worry about it. I highlighted on these slides what we're gonna look at. So what this is saying, all of our students last year, over nine-hundred thousand students in Pennsylvania were tested in math. They were tested in the PSSA in grades three through eight, and also in the Keystone Exam. And the PASA is an exam that's given to a very small number of special needs students. So almost a million kids were given this exam. And across the Commonwealth, seventy-two percent of all students were either proficient or advanced in mathematics. Pennsylvania stated that they would like the goal to be seventy-three percent. And so you see, as a Commonwealth, they just missed that goal. And then the other thing I highlighted, it's what they're now calling what our historically underperforming subgroup is. For us, and for most districts, is our economically disadvantaged subgroup. And you can see the gap, going back to that question about the gap between high and low performers. Across the Commonwealth, only fifty-six percent of economically disadvantaged students, and again, those are our students who are on free and reduced lunch, that's how that is calculated, were proficient or advanced. And Pennsylvania said the goal was fifty-nine percent. You know, recognizing that you're not gonna have the same percentage. So what you're seeing there is a sixteen-point spread. Seventy-two percent for all students, fifty-six percent for the economically disadvantaged students, and that's in mathematics. Again, the same data source for reading literature. Again, it's looking at almost a million students across the Commonwealth being given that PSSA in grades three through eight, the Keystone Exam in literature, and again, that test that very few kids take, special needs kids. And across the Commonwealth, seventy percent of students were proficient or advanced in reading slash literature. And again, highlighted among that economically disadvantaged population, fifty-four percent of the kids. And again, just missing the goal that the state set also. But interestingly, or coincidentally, again, a sixteen-point gap. There is a sixteen-point gap in mathematics across the state between how all kids did, and how our economically disadvantaged kids did, and a sixteen-point gap in reading and literature. The next couple of slides are gonna look at us as a district. Southmoreland School District, we had over a thousand students test in mathematics slash the Keystone Algebra. And again, that goal that the state set was seventy-one percent. Southmoreland students were eighty-eight percent proficient overall. Eighty-eight percent either proficient or advanced. All students across the district. And again, economically disadvantaged, that figure's eighty-two percent. You're not seeing that sixteen-point gap that you see across the state. You're seeing a six-point spread. District, again, over a thousand students in our district tested in reading and literature. Commonwealth sets a goal of sixty-nine percent for everybody. Southmoreland, eighty-one percent of our students across the district are proficient or advanced in reading. And seventy-five percent, three-fourths, economically disadvantaged students proficient or advanced. So again, not the sixteen-point gap, but a six-point gap between how all of our students perform and our economically disadvantaged students. And in an effort to shorten the presentation and not make this a broken record, I could go through and pull out every single grade in reading and math. The feds don't look at science and writing. The feds are looking at reading and math achievement. What you would see if we pulled out the other grades is a very stark difference in how we perform and how everybody else is performing, not only overall, but with our economically disadvantaged population. But we have had issues with performance at the high school. So I'm gonna show you a couple more slides that just focus, not on our district as a whole, but just focus on the high school. And again, this isn't growth, because we know that wasn't where we wanted it to be. This is just achievement. So last year, on our Keystone Exam, these are last year's eleventh-grade students. Seventy percent of last year's students were proficient or advanced on that Keystone. It was sixty-four percent was how everybody else in the state did. And, you know, a six-point gap. And among our economically disadvantaged students, fifty-eight percent of them were proficient or advanced at the high school in math, compared with forty-four percent of the economically disadvantaged students across the Commonwealth. And I think you're starting to pick up a trend here about how our performance is overall, and with our historically underperforming population of students. And at the high school, again, just sticking with them, in reading, eighty percent of our students were advanced or proficient in reading at the high school on that Keystone Exam. Seventy-four percent across the state. And seventy percent of our students were, our economically disadvantaged students were proficient or advanced versus fifty-seven percent. So we have a ten-point gap at the high school. Seventeen-point gap across the state. And again, oh, and you pull one more out, I'm sorry. I said they didn't do science. They do do science. And there it is. Our district Keystone Exam last year in eleventh-grade science, our students were sixty-five percent proficient last year in science, our eleventh graders, versus fifty-four percent of state eleventh graders. And this really stands out, is among our economically disadvantaged population, fifty-two percent of Southmoreland eleventh graders were proficient or advanced in science as compared with only thirty-three percent across the Commonwealth. So again, focusing on the high school, because that is an area where we've had some concern with a little bit, and again, it is important to note that this is a trend throughout the Commonwealth, that a study linking results, achievement results all across the Commonwealth to your economically disadvantaged students. The more students you have that are economically disadvantaged, the lower the performance is, and it stands out even more when you get to high school. And that's what we are working on. We've done a good job in closing the gap. Obviously, we want that achievement to be higher everywhere and at the high school, but we've really done a nice job of closing the gap between overall performance and the performance of our economically disadvantaged students. I pulled out one other example of another grade. I'm not gonna show you third-grade reading, third-grade math, fourth-grade reading, fourth-grade math. It's a stunning comparison. But just to make the point, I pulled out one grade that is not a high school grade. This is last year, PSSA mathematics. Last year, our eighth graders were ninety-four percent proficient or advanced. Well, you can see seventy-eight percent of them were advanced. Ninety-four percent proficient or advanced versus seventy-three percent of the kids in the Commonwealth. A twenty-one-point difference, keeping in mind that forty-eight percent of our kids are economically disadvantaged, we still outpace the state by twenty-one percent. And then among our economically disadvantaged students, ninety percent are proficient or advanced versus fifty-eight percent of the students across the Commonwealth. Only a four-point gap, that's an amazing job of closing that gap. If you look at the gap between the fifty-eight, sixty-eight, what's that, fifteen points? So I wanna talk a little bit about, you know, what we've been doing specifically. This has been really about a dozen-year journey to be able, not only to get our students to be high-achieving, but also to get our, to really focus on the performance of our economically disadvantaged students. We, when forty-eight percent of your students are on free and reduced lunch, we don't have the luxury of, and I, we don't have the luxury of being able to hide behind the high performance of our so-called wealthier kids. If you happen to be in a school district that has a very low percentage of economically disadvantaged kids, there's an expectation that their overall performance is going to be higher. How have we been able to do it? Well, again, I wanna focus on the high school, actually, as an example of how that has happened. This data is coming from the College Board. And this is Advanced Placement data. Why is our achievement going up? Well, across the district, years ago, we started making sure that all of our students accessed the highest level curriculum that we had. The way we were schooled when we were youngsters is, from the very earliest early age, you started selecting and sorting kids into different groups. We eliminated, essentially, we have eliminated those groups in our school. And that is trickling up all the way through the high school. Next year, I think only our senior class will still have two levels of social studies, science, English, and math. The old academic and the honors or college prep. Now what we have is college prep and advanced placement. We did, we started this years ago in our other schools. We don't have different math groups, different reading groups. Everybody gets the same guaranteed curriculum. And then when kids struggle, we provide interventions during the school day outside of their math class, so they're not missing the regular math, and they can get caught up. And that really has been the secret to our success. But I'm going to use the high school as an example of how this is working. Back in two thousand ten, eleven, it's kind of, you know, I say this with quite a bit of shame, actually, but we had twenty-two students that took, that were in advanced placement classes. This is only five, this isn't fifty years ago, this is five years ago. And those twenty-two students took a total of thirty-four advanced placement exams. We used to allow, the culture of this, of this high school, in this district, the culture of the school used to be that you could take the AP class, and typically, you did not take the test. The test costs money, the test is difficult. Back in eleven, twelve, we changed that, and we started requiring, and our parents have been very supportive, if you take an AP class, you're expected to take the exam. They go hand in hand. We want to know how you're performing. We want to be able to evaluate how our teaching program is performing. And there you see, in ten, eleven, we had eleven kids that had, well, and some of those could have been repeat kids, with scores of three or higher, thirteen, fourteen, we had thirty-five. And I do have two thousand, this year's data, which isn't part of the College Board yet, but this year, from twenty-two, we have a total of a hundred and thirty-seven students in advanced placement courses this year. That's a five-hundred-and-twenty-three percent increase in the last five years of getting kids into our highest level of academic content. The eleven to thirty-five, that represents a hundred and seventy-three percent increase of getting kids to demonstrate. If you get a three or higher in AP exam, that usually means that you get college credit for taking that course. We expect kids, we want kids in advanced placement. We want them to take the test. We want to know that our program is doing what it's supposed to do, and we want to know that our students are being successful. This has been a major, major, as a matter of fact, this five-hundred-and-twenty-three percent increase in five years of enrolling kids in advanced placement, I would be hard-pressed to find schools in the nation that have done that in the last five years. That really does stand out, and we really should keep that in mind. And the other thing, which I just, for the very first time ever in the history of Southmoreland, we have an advanced, we have a VOTEC student taking AP Chemistry. First time that we're sending, you know, in years past, we wouldn't even create it, we wouldn't even think that we had to create a schedule that would allow a kid to come back from VOTEC and enter an advanced placement class. But we have that now, and I think what really is making it hit home for me was finding out that next year, in eleventh grade, we have AP, American Lit is the AP class for eleventh graders. Forty percent of our eleventh-grade class, forty percent of our eleventh-grade class is signing up for Advanced Placement English in eleventh grade. Six, over sixty students in that class. Because we have changed the culture, we want kids taking our highest-level courses, and we also are showing kids who never thought that they could do this level of work, that, you know what, yeah, you can. You really can, and we want you to do it. So again, when we got that school performance profile and saw that we just kind of flatlined on our growth figures, we really believe that we are working the correct plan, and we intend to be able to make significant gains on that part of the profile. Interestingly, you know, because the growth was worth forty percent of the profile, our profile did not, was not where we wanted it to be at the high school. However, of the seventeen things that are measured in the high school on the school performance profile, ten of those seventeen increased last year. So we really, really believe that we are working that right plan. So here's a question, getting back to, you know, that earlier question about the average performance of systems is not the most important factor, is the gap between high and low performers? That got me thinking about, well, what if we compared our economically disadvantaged population with those of other school districts? How does our economically disadvantaged population, the performance, the achievement performance of our economically disadvantaged kids compare to those of Penn Trafford's kids, economically disadvantaged kids, Norwin's economically disadvantaged kids? Because we really do see where we have closed that gap, and we have high-performing economically disadvantaged kids, which really does link to high-performing school districts. I did a study of that. And all this data is from the school performance profile, but if you match our economically disadvantaged kids, essentially, that's forty-eight percent of our students district-wide. If you compare our economically disadvantaged kids with those from the economically disadvantaged kids from the Fayette County School Districts, we're number one in math, we're number one in reading. So, and just to make sure everyone understands this, Southmoreland's economically disadvantaged kids outperform Uniontown's economically disadvantaged kids, Belleverness, Brownsville, everyone, one in math, one in reading. Well, how about Westmoreland County? Well, our economically disadvantaged kids are the highest performing in math and reading in Westmoreland County also. Our economically disadvantaged kids outperform Franklin Regional's economically disadvantaged population. Leganiers, Norwins, all of them. And just to take it one step further, how about Allegheny County? How do we match up there? Only Hampton High School outperform, I'm sorry, only Hampton School District outperformed Southmoreland in math, and five others. I think there's like forty-four districts in Allegheny County. So we're number two in math, we're number six in reading. I have it all listed. So there's really only two pages in the folder here. You know, one, the first page is the two-sided sheet where I actually have the performance of economically disadvantaged achievement performance listed. And the second thing, well, if our economically disadvantaged kids are doing so well, I took it a step further, and here's the five-hundred school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And it got me thinking, how many school districts in the Commonwealth that have a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students? How many of those school districts have a higher district school performance profile than Southmoreland's? And I believe they're highlighted as you go, I believe there was only two. Yours highlighted? You guys have highlights on any of yours? Well, I'll be, I'll, uh... Well, I apologize for the highlights not coming out in the copy-in, but what this, if you go through this, what you'll see are there two other districts in the Commonwealth that have a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students that outperform Southmoreland. And again, what I started to do, Levi, is actually list the economically disadvantaged population of everybody, and realized that would take me forever. So I started going through and just looking at those districts that, who's, that have a higher district profile score than us, and then seeing what their economically disadvantaged percentage was. I will, I will, thanks. I just made it hard for myself, sorry, but I will do that. And just to kind of bring this home, I went back through some data sources. We didn't have the performance profile back in oh-two, oh-three. So the Pennsylvania Department of Education website lists this as our performance back in two thousand and three. All of our students that were tested back in two thousand and three district-wide, less than half of them were proficient or advanced in math, and sixty-one percent were proficient or advanced in reading. Of our economically disadvantaged population, thirty percent in math, forty percent in reading. And this takes us to two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, eighty-eight percent in math, eighty-two percent in reading, economically disadvantaged, eighty-two and seventy-five. So this school district absolutely has received quite a bit of attention. And, you know, that Business Times overachiever, we're the most overachieving district in Western PA, and the second-most in the Commonwealth. This is really why, right here, because we have, we've raised the bar for all of our kids, and once we've raised that achievement bar, we've closed the gap. You know, look at, look at that gap back in two thousand and two, two thousand and three. That's a pretty significant gap, twenty points in both reading and math between everybody and economically disadvantaged. And now look how much higher the kids are performing. Last year, and essentially, that gap has been narrowed down to just six or seven points. You'll find a couple of grade levels where economically disadvantaged kids actually outperform the whole, and that pops up every year. outperform the whole and that pops up every year. Three things that I think we've done over the last twelve years. First and foremost is that we have created a collaborative collaboration. We can be together on the same problem. It's not me going to my classroom and teaching my best fourth grade stuff and it's not my part, my person next to me going to their classroom, closing the door and teaching their best fourth grade stuff. Their best fourth grade stuff might not match. We work together. This is kindergarten team meeting last school year, just a quick example, probably about ten plans that shows you how people work together and get everybody on the same page. That's our entire kindergarten, all of our kindergarten teachers in the district getting together and talking about how to teach kids the part of their curriculum that deals with comparing things and patterns and, and, and let's all do it the same way, let's all set the same performance standards, let's all make sure our kids achieve the standard, everybody working together. And again, I think when we're in those team meetings and we're supporting one another and we're trying to work with one another to build capacity for us to teach kids better, I think what that leads to is a real sense of accountability and I think that's been key for us. We're accountable to one another. I've done a lot of presentations where I put this up there and never once have I ever not been able to get somebody in the audience to tell me very clearly why the paint crew did not pick up the roadkill. See, I always, I always get that. It's always so evident it wasn't their job. Well, if you think, and I know that was just a minute of video, but those kindergarten teachers who probably have eighteen kids in a class, they weren't worried about their eighteen kids. Your kids are my kids, my kids are your kids, the success of your kids is my success, my success is your success, they, they want to do it together. And really, in this kind of, in any, look, look at any athletic team, you need to work together, you need to work together in order to achieve the highest degree of learning. And then lastly, so our collaboration has been part of why we've been able to get to these heights, our accountability and also I work with a lot of committed people that really are all in and trying to, to get us to achieve high results. And this, this guy right here is a committed pirate. He doesn't just have one hook, he's got two hooks, he's got two peg legs, he's got two parrots, he's got two eye patches and that's a guy who's committed and that's what we, that's what we need in this district. We have to be committed to working together. Anytime we fall down, we've got to figure it out. Anytime our performance is not where we want it to be, we have to figure out why through the, through our planning process and we have to make sure that we believe in the plan that we put together, that we're doing it the right way and we have to commit a hundred percent to always shooting for perfection that we're never going to achieve. But organizations, i- if you want to shoot for mediocrity, you can be okay, but if you, if you, if you're in an organization and you try to shoot for perfection, when it's all said and done, you might find that you're pretty darn good. And we're always going to be shooting for perfection, knowing that we're probably never going to come anywhere near achieving it, but we'll, we'll commit to the journey. So, without taking up any more time, I will, I will be studious and figure out, because what I just gave you doesn't make a whole lot of, give a whole lot of purpose if I don't figure out who those districts are. I'll do that and we can continue on the meeting and I'll give that information a little bit later. Any questions? Again, that's achievement, it's not, it's not the profile growth data. Yes, sir?
Now, I have, you can start with your presentation. When you said that our economic challenge group is performing superior to everybody in the state, yet we're still failing, that tells me there's a problem. When you go, the family's got money for a failure, it doesn't happen. Secondly, you mentioned about the economic challenge group more or less indicating that they write our scores out, like what's reading like being, and that the economic challenge is a good excuse to hide behind, when they've done studies and they've seen some of these totally destitute school businesses that think we fail in comparison to them and they accept every doubt that tells me there's something wrong inside of them.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that I think the data that was presented absolutely is, is trying to demonstrate that we certainly are the last to try to hide behind, you know, we don't, at, at any point do we, have I ever heard anyone stand around and say, oh, you know what, we're, we can't be this good because almost half of our kids are on free and reduced lunch. No, we want to be great. I mean, we've, we've increased our Advanced Placement enrollment over five hundred percent in five years. We're not hiding behind anything. And again, the failing comment, our, our district performance profiles over eighty, which is, which is far ahead of the state and we know what our high schools was, sixty-nine or sixty-eight point, whatever it was and I think the state last year, they didn't say anything about it this year, but last year they said that, that they would like to see all the schools be above seventy, but actually the state does not give unless you're a Title I school, which the high school is not, they don't identify failing schools. And even for the Title I schools, they don't call it failing, they call it focus and priority schools, schools that need extra help because they're not performing the way that they need to be. And the state does not have the high school designated as that. So, but again, it's just, it's just all semantics here, Ken, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of the schools are surveying through that, we got to have, have this prepared. You can word it any way you want, you still got sixty-eight point nine as a number. That's a whole group of high school students that have gone through our school and have failed. Some have skipped all, but that's terrible.
Yeah, and again, I, we could go point, counterpoint, Ken, but just, I think it really diminishes the, the kids to say that because the, the school performance profile score is a sixty-eight, nine, that that means a whole group of kids has gone through there and failed. What it means is that the school performance profile score of Southmoreland High School is sixty-eight, nine.
Yeah.
That's what it mean, well, then, then what you do, Ken...
You talk about a system group without you. Now you're telling me, well, you know, that we can't really use that. Well, you either have, you can't take your case and prove it's right or the other. You know, our scores indicate that we're not doing very well. I mean, you can have all those things that you put up there, because we subscribe to that particular group, whatever, but when the facts come to them, we are failing. And if your measure says that we are not failing...
I just...
You have any other category other than scores and those are failing?
Our federal measures just, just showed that very clearly.
Federal is no more than the state officials or our scores.
Again, Ken...
I mean, it's ridiculous that you stand up there and say that we are excelling, we are not excelling.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it is ridiculous to present the federal measures that I reported here tonight. We, we presented the school performance profile in the late fall and we broke that down and that led us to, to creating a plan to address what those seventeen factors, performance measures on that profile told us and that's what we done.
If you were your last year in the same situation and you told us, well, we're going to go for seventy minutes of intervention, but we're not going to say it's intervention, that seems to be the problem. Obviously, that's not working, we went even further down the line. Can you ever consider the fact that the curriculum you're teaching and the forcing of the department teachers to teach it that way would possibly be the answer?
Ken, we, we believe in what we're doing and we're doing it together, we're not forcing anything. I don't, I don't think we're forcing anything on our teachers. I mean, we're, we're part of a team that is working together to try to improve student results. Yes, sir?
When you presented tonight, strictly achievement, am I correct?
Absolutely.
When you talk about profiles, would you like to go on achievement and growth?
Well, in other fact, so we're talking about achievement only being forty percent of the equation.
Right, so, so again, what you're presenting tonight is that as students' achievement, we are outperforming...
Yes.
Most everybody in the state, certainly in our school districts in this area, achievement wise. Our problem is that because of the way we're being measured by the state, the growth issue is what we need to improve, but that doesn't mean we're failing, it just means that we're not achieving that artificial measure that the state has placed, that the federal government doesn't place on us for growth.
Yes, and it's an issue in all of our schools and whether we agree with it or believe in as it a valid measure, that's not my job. My job is to, is to try to get us to, to be successful in anything that we're being measured on.
So, I guess the key then here is to figure out how the other school districts are managing to achieve that growth despite the fact that we're outachieving them in performance. It's that growth that they're getting us on, but that's what we have to figure out what to do in order to improve our overall state performance.
Any other questions? Yes, sir? Well, do you pay part of that as a district or do you pay all of the... It's kind of a reciprocal accountability. If I expect you to do something, then you should have an expectation of me. We went to kids and parents and say, because some of these kids are taking three and four AP courses, we want you to take the exam. I'm not, I'm not the high school principal, but the test is probably about eighty bucks, about eighty dollars a test and so what you, you folks do, thank you. And other, actually, we were one of the first, other districts are catching on, we pay for our students. We, we pay the, the Advanced Placement exam fee. If you are a free or a reduced lunch student, your fees are either reduced or waived. But the, the district, the board does, does provide that and it's essential for us to be able, to be able to do this. We have, and the, the reason that we have about moving kids into higher learning, why do we have so many kids in that 11th grade class next year in AP English? Because we started, we never had pre-AP. Years ago, I never even knew pre-AP existed, but some of your, your better connected areas have pre-AP, we have pre, we put pre-AP in last year in English, that has allowed our, our, you know, we don't have that, that academic was what the old, and some of you have been around the district longer, there used to be even a general track and we just track kids and track kids and so, and eventually they get far removed from accessing your richest curriculum. And now our, our kids are, are accessing that curriculum together, almost, of, of the, of the sixty kids that are taking Advanced Placement English next year, forty percent of those sixty are economically disadvantaged students. So, we're, you know, that, that's, that's our, that's our mission. We educate that, we try to educate them to the best of our ability and then try to have results that, that show that they're doing it. That's why we do take that school performance profile so seriously and we're doing everything in our power to make, to have it show in, in our positive results also. And we'll continue that.
I have impressed you in a way in the past, um, with my, my kids, and very much, uh, outstanding. The only way that I would even bet you is the same level that we do with it is sports, faith, with that comparison of the history, how are we doing? And if there's no magic nineteen fifty, probably we do very well, I mean, I do, it's how are we doing in the current world and the potential, how anyone can look at these scores and not say this has been a very successful district? I have no idea what that means.
And the importance of this Advanced Placement, for, for those of you who aren't familiar, the problem is that college and workplace evaluators, if they see an A on your transcript for, for Honors English, they don't know how your Honors English matches up with the kid that took Honors English in Kansas or Upper St. Clair. They don't know. Advanced Placement is a, is a national curriculum, it's nationally certified, nationally normed. We send our, and again, you folks provide that. We send our teachers out in the summertime to get certified to teach Advanced Placement and they go all over the east, wherever they have to go, sometimes down to Morgantown, town, West Virginia, sometimes to William &amp; Mary in Virginia. We, we send them all over the east to get this training and then they deliver a national curriculum. So, when kids take this test, we can evaluate how we do with how everybody is doing and if we're, if we're not having a high percentage of kids with a three or better, then that gives us an opportunity to talk about what is it about our Advanced Placement program that we're not doing, that we need to do more effectively. And it's really very few opportunities that you have to be able to evaluate your instruction with something that is, is referenced nationally and that provides us with a real opportunity that we want to take advantage of. Yes, sir?
So, you said we pay, you know, we pay for the ones that are free and reduced lunch. What about the ones that are...
I'm sorry, Mike, you folks pay for everybody? We get state money for students who are free and reduced, they're, it's subsidized. So, we don't have to pay, you folks don't have to pay as much.
So, we do help them with our...
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, minutes? It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the March fifth, two thousand and fifteen discussion meeting and the March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen voting meeting.
Need a motion? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mr. Beistel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Business and Finance Fund Accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the March two thousand and fifteen Treasurer's Report and the March two thousand and fifteen Board Summary, Fund Accounting Check Summary.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pelikowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Budget?
It is recommended that the board approve the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year.
Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second. Second by Mrs. Love. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pelikowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. While we're under budget and finance or business and finance, it would probably be a good idea to pick a date and set a budget meeting. Jim and I spoke earlier today and we were looking possibly at April twenty-third, which is the Thursday after next, if that fits with everyone's schedule. Mr. Calero's chair?
Absolutely.
Not good for you? Okay. When can you make somewhere around that date? Wednesday, the 22nd? So it's recommended that the board schedule a budget meeting for Wednesday, April 22nd, at seven o'clock in the middle school cafeteria. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. New business, tentative list of graduates? It is recommended that the board approve the tentative list of graduates for the Southmoreland High School class of 2015. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Revision of the 2015-16 school calendar? It is recommended that the board approve revisions to the 2015-16 school calendar to reflect an additional teacher workday based on the new collective bargaining agreement. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Renewal with Camco? It is recommended that the board renew the contract with Camco for occupational and physical therapy services. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second by Mr. Beistel. Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Athletic and maintenance supplies? It is recommended that the board grant administration permission to advertise for athletic and maintenance supplies. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Policy 307? It is recommended that the board approve revisions to policy 307, student, teachers, and interns. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mr. Calero. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Need a motion to recess for executive session for personnel and tax litigation? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Personnel, teacher resignations? It is recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignations of the following teachers for the purpose of retirement. Susan Ansel, Fred Dugger, Nancy Dove, Phyllis Dugan, Rebecca Elnikar, Sylvia Jeffers, James Kintai, Theodore Muzik, Barbara Straub, Bobby Thompson, Tammy Wazalovsky, and Andrew Yarten. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions or comments? Yeah, just, these individuals, I didn't tally up their years, but many, 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 many years of service to the students of this district. And I'd just like to publicly thank them for the excellence that they've provided on behalf of our students over a period of many, many years. So, big thanks to this group of people. Roll call, please.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
With regrets, yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, same, with regrets.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, with regrets. Yes, sir.
I have something I'd like to bring up at this point, because I think it ties into this.
Need a motion to suspend? Could you fade away from the agenda, correct? We have the agenda. If you want to bring something up, it's not on the agenda. Need a motion to suspend the rules? Well, we have the agenda. He said he has something to bring up now.
I have something to bring up, but I think should be addressed in this issue that we just devoted.
We should have a motion to suspend the rules then, because we have the agenda. Or we'd have to put it at the end. Correct?
It's already been voted on. Is it a?
Yes.
No, no, no. It would be something related to this, yes.
Is it something to vote on?
If you want to, yeah. You want to wait till the end of the meeting? That's fine.
If it's something to vote on, then we have to follow the agenda unless you have a motion or a second to suspend the rules. Or if it's just a comment, you can make it now.
Well, the comment would be, is I believe we should fund this money. You gave these teachers these ERIPs, and that's two and a half dollars. And you're going to give it to them, that's fine. But you ought to put it in the budget to fund it. And that's what I would like to make the motion to do, is to fund this.
Ken, it's, well, it was part of your budget proposal, was it not?
Well, of course, every year we budget to pay the. Is it in the assigned fund balance? Only the original ERIPs are in the committed. So why aren't we doing it now? That would take a board motion to. That's what I'm talking about. I mean, we should make sure that the money is there for these people when the time comes to take it. You know, because my own feelings, do you know those that I've expressed, that we're headed to a tunnel for money? And I want to make sure that these people get their money. You know, you give it to them, so we should fund it. I have a comment on that. If you don't do it, and you put it in the budget as opposed to setting it aside in the general fund, when you have your budget each year, if you have that shortfall, you're going to make it out of the general fund anyway. So what's the difference? Well, look at it this way, though. If something comes up, there are all these grand and gaudy plans that we have, spending it. And when the money's gone, where are you going to get the money? Is there, will there no longer be any money in the operating budget? And that's true, if this board votes to use all of those other monies for those other activities you're referring to. Obviously, they couldn't do that if there wasn't enough money in the general fund balance. I'm afraid that if we don't leave it in the regular budget and we take it out of the general fund balance, that what we do is we lose sight of the fact that the reason that we offered these retirements with this incentive was so that we would save the money out of our budget each and every year, as opposed to saying, well, we just took it out of the general fund balance. I think you tend to lose sight of the fact that that's actually a savings every year. Well, you've got a million five on there that is supposed to be for them teachers. And we can't guarantee it? I mean, where's the guarantee? If you were one of those teachers, and you took that retirement, and two years from now, we don't have a penny in our accounts, where are you going to get the money to pay them? You know, we basically made a promise to these people, that they're going to get this money, but we're not willing to put the money in the bank where it should be. And I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but you're just reducing the fund balance now instead of reducing it later. It's the same difference. You reduce it later by taking it out each year, or you reduce it all at one time by taking it out now and setting it aside? Well, no, that's not necessarily true, because you may be able to pay it for a couple of years. And then if you're broke, this way, that money is put aside, so that they will get that money. If two or three years down the road into the six-year deal on this, that we run out of money, that argument of yours fails. There is no more money to go and get. You're right. So if we take it out now, will we broke sooner down the road? Well, we're going to be broke one way or the other. Well. Then it doesn't matter. But, well, it doesn't matter, because these, there's strong teachers who will not get their money.
Okay, Ken. If we don't have a motion or a second to suspend the rules, then we'll keep following the agenda. If you want to bring it up at the end to vote it up or down, that's fine.
I will do that then.
Well, we'll wait until we get through it, unless there's a motion or a second to suspend the rules. So, no motion or a second to suspend the rules, we'll move on and. Curriculum and staffing proposal? It's recommended that the board approve the curriculum and staffing proposal that was presented to the board at the April 2nd, 2015 planning meeting. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions or comments?
I passed out a newspaper article, some of you may have seen it. I'll keep this brief. I think it ties in very well with this curriculum and staffing proposal. Penn Hills has to borrow eighteen million dollars to do its yearly budget. And the board member said, oh, my goodness, how did we get to that? I think with things like this, we need to take our time, take a look at replacing most of these teachers, and see what areas we can sacrifice in until we get ourselves on more financial good footing. And I probably just wasted my breath, anyway.
And, Mr. Al, I think that's a very good point, and that's why there's a proposal to reduce the teaching force by two.
Well, I think we could do a lot better than that, Jack. A lot better than that. But of course, this board is just going to go ahead and do whatever it is that you want them to do, so.
Well, and also, going along with this, not only not replacing two, but this isn't too high, these other positions, this is just to start the process of these other positions, so we can decide on the road.
Whatever.
Any more questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
No.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight to one. Middle school cheerleading? It is recommended that the board accept the resignation of Jennifer Terraski as middle school cheerleading coach and authorize administration to post and advertise the position. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Banned equipment hauler resignation? It is recommended that the board accept the resignation of Tim Swope as banned equipment hauler and authorize administration to post and advertise the position. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Miller, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley?
Love.
Love, sorry. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Grooms Bus Transit Drivers? It is recommended that the board approve Susan Summy and Cheryl Widener as drivers for Grooms Transit pending receipt of all of their clearances. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Love, second. Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Additions to the day-to-day sub-list? It is recommended that the board approve additions to the day-to-day sub-list, which include, as day-to-day teacher substitutes, Megan Lapsa, Amanda Mullin, Michelle Stoll, and Caitlin Tyrone, and as a secretary on an aid day-to-day substitute, Angela Perkey. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second by Mr. Miller. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. FMLA? It's recommended that the board grant a family medical leave to Sandy Tilka, Special Education Aid at Southmoreland Primary Center from approximately April 22nd through June 4th, 2015. Need a motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calero. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Non-affiliated personal wage and benefit agreement? It's recommended that the board approve an updated wage and benefits agreement with the non-affiliated personnel. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Board reports, student reports, I think, were passed out, and I hope they're having a great time at the play. Uh, CWCTC report?
Yes, our meeting was held on March 18th. JOC granted permission to re-advertise for the business manager slash office manager position. Um, that position fulfilled the office manager position due to retirement. There was some confusion with the other districts that we were, um, adding an additional position, but we are not, we're just replacing the office manager with the business manager. And, um, unfortunately, we're moving forward with the original anticipated loan process that, that's already in place. Um, Jim and Jack knew that there were some other options that they had presented to us, but, uh, they were voted down. Um, and my opinion is hopefully when we hire a business manager, um, we can somehow deal with that process, and to get some help from Jack and Jim to maybe make that happen.
The lady that's the current fiscal secretary, Colleen?
Yes.
Is her last name?
Peck.
Colleen Peck, that's right. She's been there how long?
A long time.
Gotta be thirty-plus or more years, so. She's to be commended for her long service down there.
She is.
She probably might've been there for the life of the VOTEC so far.
Probably.
A great, a great lady, and I've enjoyed knowing her over the years, so.
We also approved our school calendar. Um, first date of instruction is August 24th, the last day is May 26th, and, lastly, um, we received our proposed budget for the upcoming year in the mail last week, and we will be discussing that at our next meeting, which is April 15th. That's my report.
Thank you. Uh, Debbie, I, your report?
Um, we had a, a special meeting, um, to vote on the Claireview School, and it is going to remain open. Uh, and then our general meeting, um, we did, uh, general personnel decisions. Um, Dr. Mata, the executive director, is taking a leave of absence from April 15th up until her retirement on August 3rd. They, uh, have hired the PSBA to help search for an executive director, um, and they are gonna have, uh, the three, the business manager, the...
Business manager, the personnel director, and the assistant executive director.
Yeah, they're gonna run it until they put somebody else in the place of the executive director. We also approved the, the calendar, and we also approved the general op budget. Includes my report.
Thank you. PSBA liaison report?
Uh, the debate over governor's state budget, uh, in our second month, with a major focus on potential winners and losers, under a proposed shift in who pays state taxes and school property taxes. The final week of legislative budget hearings focused on how taxpayers in school districts across Pennsylvania would fare under the governor's plan to overhaul the state tax structure and reduce state property taxes. An average fifty percent is part of the state budget of more than thirty billion. Uh, this past Monday, April 6th, Carlisle Area School District students tested out a concept called E Day. The students were learning from the comfort of their own home. Students went to, uh, all of their teachers' websites for assigned work. Those teachers had, uh, office hours to answer their emails or take calls from people with questions. The district had hard copies available for those without internet access, and all assignments had to, uh, be completed on a deadline. The concept came about as a substitute for build-in snow days, and who knows with the kind of winters that we've been having, might be a concept that, uh, we might be using in the near future. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Uh, superintendent's report?
Yeah, uh, the first item I have, um, is more, uh, a committee report, but, um, I know Dr. Scott, and Mr. Polakowski, Mr. Mizwell, Mr. Swink, have been doing a lot of work, uh, in terms of, um, looking at the gymnasium flooring situation and the direction we might wanna go there, so, um, I will turn that over to maybe Mr. Mizwell. Would you like to start with, uh, some of your findings and, uh, things, the information that you have? Jason, jump in there? Tim? Charlie?
Yes, uh, to date, we have three proposals, um, for the replacement of gym floor and, uh, resetting the bleachers.
You have those in front of you, see them, by the way?
Right. We, we also looked at a proposal to, uh, have the bleachers mounted on the back wall. Uh, if you see they're setting, right now, they're setting out away from the wall, and they divide up the, the gymnasium. Uh, CM Iconlobb, uh, also sent in a proposal this afternoon to have the bleachers mounted on the back wall. Now, this, uh, each, each proposal has, uh, a few minor changes on the type of wood, uh, the grade of wood, and, uh, once you read the proposal, you'll see, uh, where these differences are at. One other recommendation, uh, most of the floor companies did make was to remove our moving wall, movable wall that's in there, it separates two gyms, uh, it's out of date, uh, it's, uh, needs some repairs, and the best time to remove it is just before you do a new floor, 'cause you'd have to get equipment in on the floor to take the wall down, and we also received a proposal on putting a new wall in, and, uh, movable wall and removing that movable wall.
Just as an aside, the, the wall that Mr. Mizwell's talking about was not replaced when the building was renovated, so that wall has been there since the inception of the high school, am I correct?
Yes.
It's a divider.
Right, it's a divider. Right now, most, most, uh, new installations use a fold-up curtain or, or a roll-up curtain. It's a lightweight curtain. Uh, it's, uh, it's easier to maintain, uh, a lightweight curtain than it is that movable wall.
Lightweight curtain would be similar to the one we have in this building, the hall here.
Wait, is that light turned on?
I, I believe it's on. It's probably too low.
Get it closer.
I'll move it up. Thank you.
I just wanna clarify something. Uh, sports flooring, Sports Force is calling this their bid. Let's be clear, this has not been put out the bid yet, so this, scratch out the word "bid," just use "quote," okay?
Yeah, if the board decides to, to move ahead with this project, we will have to formally bid it. Tim?
Well, and just to, to set up the, the conversation for the board, uh, a little information, Charlie, Lee, Mr. Kropchak, myself, and Jason, uh, several weeks ago, we, we took a trip out to Waynesburg to look at one of the manufacturer's proj- projects that was a wood floor over a synthetic floor. Took a look at that, also that day, went and looked at two gymnasiums by another manufacturer at Connelsville. One was a redone floor, not oversynthetic, and another one was a brand-new gymnasium. More recently, Lee and Charlie have gone out to CCAC Voice Campus, which is a wood oversynthetic from one of the manufacturers, and also, uh, we've all been in contact, but especially these folks, with, with the various, uh, bleacher people and different manufacturers, and, and, in meeting, uh, there are some recommendations that we would like to make to the board, just to sort of, as a guide of, of what we would be proposing, and, and in talking to, to everyone, it's, it's the wood floor over the whole gymnasium, leaving the bleachers where they are?
Yes.
Uh, and moving the, uh, paying to have the divider taken out and having a curtain put in?
Yes.
And what am I missing?
That, um, that would just about cover the project, because, once, once you, uh, remove the old movable wall and drop the new curtain, you'll be able to separate that, and if they do not, if we do not move the bleachers back to the wall, we'll still have the other separation for the part, and they'll both be, it'll be a wood floor over the entire surface.
Lee, you, you talked to a company that thought that bleachers, the motors were good, and they could reinforce the flooring under the wood floor where the rollers would be, and, and it wasn't a problem to, to leave them where they are?
Yes.
And that, that is the least costly system?
Yes.
By far?
By far. It would take extra blocking, uh, underneath the area where the wheels, uh, would move, to move the bleachers back towards the wall, but, uh, when I did speak to the manufacturers, uh, they did say that wouldn't be a problem.
Now, could there be other things that are specced out, but the board could decide not to do? For example, the basketball stanchions were talked about, the audio system was talked about?
The, uh, we, we did get a, uh, cost estimate for a ceiling suspended power operating basket, basketball backstop, but, uh, when we looked at the other gym, they actually raised their op, and our, our basketball hoops can be raised up on the present.
Okay.
So that would not need to be done?
That would not need to be done.
It would be a matter of adjustment.
Yeah, we, it's just an adjustment straight up. The sound system, uh, we still have someone scheduled to come in to do it, an evaluation on the sound system.
Does, does that cover the recommendations that, that we're making?
Yes.
So, if you put the wooden floor over top, how much does it raise?
Inch, inch and five eighths, maybe an inch and three quarter.
So how does that do if you have the basketball hoops come down with your ten-foot regulation?
They said they could be, that, I guess they looked at them and saw that they could be adjusted.
Okay, wouldn't require a whole new system?
The back, the hoop and the backstop can be, uh, adjusted upward.
The floor you're gonna put in under there, I know you talked about, part, uh, part of the board, but, uh, regular plywood, some people talked about compared to OSB board. Now, which one of you leaning to? The plywood or the OSB board put on top of the floor to put the regular floor on top of it?
I would have to review the specifications. I, I believe on the one, um, it's not stated.
Well, no, they stated that up there one day, I just happened to come in.
Yes, well, you, you did speak to the one gentleman, but they have, uh, each company could have two or three different ways they can put the floor in.
It's pretty flat.
Well, you, um, you can go to a number three-grade or a two-grade floor.
That's your top floor.
Somebody's, that's the top floor.
Yeah, that's your hardwood floor.
That's just the color and the shading of the floor.
And I'm talking about underneath.
Right, yes.
To give it support.
I think one was specced with regular plywood and one was, uh, OSB, that strand board.
Yeah, not OSB.
Which would be more money for plywood.
Yeah.
But, if, that's, that's what we would have to decide.
I, personally, 'cause I work with that stuff too much.
I believe so.
Yes, it's specced with plywood.
Huh?
So you're suggesting that?
That's my suggestion. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but you get more support out of it and the strengths there.
Lee or Dr. Scott, do you, do either of you know, is Sports Floor Inc. on one of the already pre-bid, uh, joint purchasing programs like Co-Stars or, or Keystone Purchasing Network or the National Joint Purchasing Allowance, Alliance?
I don't have that information, but I can...
I, they didn't mention, they didn't mention any such association, but I'm, I'm wondering if they are. We'll have to check into that. I mean, if they are, then you would not have to bid it, it would already have been pre-bid, assuming they're on one of those, those programs. Um, you took, you're looking at a project that could take upwards to about thirteen weeks to complete, using their timeline in here, plus the delivery of supplies and some of these other areas, so, um, if you wanted to get it done in time for the start of the new school year, you're on a, you're on a tight, tight timeline right now to get it moving. Unless you can work around the, the gymnasium project after school starts, I don't know.
I just had a question. Um, you had gone to some of these other places to investigate the flooring, um, are any of the companies that we have these proposals from, uh, did they do any of the works that you saw? And was there anything that you thought that was, uh, was a, was a nice, uh, a nice job?
I think all, we all saw, uh, one particular company that we thought had a product that was superior to another one that we looked at for different reasons.
We, uh, we, we, Char- Charlie and I went to, uh, Voice Campus, and we liked that floor there, that was a nice floor.
Was it the plywood that was, uh, the existing flooring?
Yes.
Or what we have, and then, uh, was it the maple wood, like, uh, I see on some of these, that had the maple flooring?
Voice, Voice Campus floor was a very nice, we walked on it, it was real solid, you couldn't tell, you couldn't tell there was any inflex to it at all, you know, besides what it was supposed to be. Painting was real well-done, transitions under the doors, you know, when you looked at it, there was no sloppiness where you could tell, like, you know, maybe a metal transition, they tied it, they tied it all together very well, um, looking at that floor. Because after we looked at Waynesburg, I was a little bit, I mean, it wasn't as nice as I thought it was gonna be, I mean, you know, put a lot of money into the floor. Uh, but they, Voice Campus, when I was very impressed with, and I was impressed with the way they did, even more so than just the floor, was coming into the gym, the way with the, you know, making sure it's not where people could trip over, you know, handicap people have easier access to it. I mean, in this proposal, I think they even have where they put the doors, so everything's all done at the same time, so you don't have to worry about, you know, doing some more modifications once they put that floor in, if I'm not mistaken.
They, they cut, actually cut the door just down and run the flooring out to the door, door edge.
But we were concerned a little bit about the bleachers, 'cause when he first looked at it, he thought that floor, it expands and contracts, bleachers sitting where they were, thought it could actually buckle in front of that because of weight. But after he did his assessment, they can build that up like Dr. Scott said, put some kind of support under those bleachers and where those wheels run, 'cause most of that behind there, even if it does put a little bit of mark on that floor, that's gonna be the auxiliary gym where, you know, it's really not the main floor. But the way he made it sound, it shouldn't do anything, they put, they even put like little brushes on it when it comes across, it cleans the floor every time that wheel goes, so it doesn't put that dirt into the, you know, wood. So, and, and it sounds like that would be the more reasonable way to go, if we don't move the bleachers, we don't have to reverse the motors, we don't have to take, you know, all the different, uh, things that we have to do to fix those bleachers that way, so. And he said the floor could be done, it was just, you know, the last thing we wanted to do is buckle in.
Correct, correct. And we're looking at, uh, the whole floor.
Yeah. I think if we do it, we'd be better off to get the whole thing done and just, even a couple of them have talked about, like, even in our, when you walk in, you know, we have the little hallway going into the gyms, both doors, they were actually gonna stop it, leave some of the rubber, so you'd have a transition from rubber back to that floor, where this guy, he's bringing it the whole way out to it meets our school floor, with just a small transition under the doors, which, I think if you're gonna do it, you might as well do it, you know, that'll make it look neater and tie in the whole floor, and you won't have that rubber that possibly could deteriorate again.
Correct. Any kind of warranty on that? Can you recall a warranty? Did they give you anything?
I, I just, uh, just from the one proposal I, I saw, warranty on that, the other ones I don't have.
Of course, that would could be something, we get into them, as we, if we're gonna proceed with this, this is something we get in with the warranty tells and so forth.
The, each, uh, each, each of the, uh, uh, floor installers that did come in, their, their major concern was the location of the bleachers and how best to handle the location of the bleachers, and, uh, through the emails with them, they, they think the best, or they, they're telling me the best location is leave the bleachers where they're at, raise them up, put the floor underneath, and not try to re-engineer the bleachers on the wall.
What's time? He getting there, we can have a paper now?
Yeah, I mean, he said it would take, they could do it through the summer. I mean, I'm sure, once they get into it, we'd have to get, you know, the way I've made it sound, we haven't had it come before, it's obviously school started and fall sports, 'cause, you know, we, we would need it. And the way they looked at, the way the access was docked and bringing the equipment in, everything's pretty simple for them, and that was a big concern, if they were able to get, you know, they'll probably have to use a tow motor or whatever, to mark off everything's level, which they said made it very easy. So, I, I, I don't think it's, probably a couple months. But, I mean, we'll find all that for sure.
But I'm just wondering, based on the time of the, if, if we're talking thirteen weeks or, you know, that, we should be talking three months, whether we shouldn't, if, if this is being brought, that we wanna move ahead with the wood floor, if I heard correctly, uh, bleachers staying, and dividers using curtains instead of the, that we approve this in principle and allow the, uh, in other words, approve the, the administration and, and Jason and the committee to move ahead with the, uh, spec-ing it out, and so we can approve it in the next meeting in May? How's that?
So you decided, you have a motion, you're making a motion right now?
I'm asking, if Jason is ready, if Mr. Polakowski's ready to move ahead, I would like to, yes, make that motion.
I would like to make that motion to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, someone help us spec it, uh, we, we spec these, patch it up, and that was very difficult because neither Mr. Patonic nor myself are, were experts in, in that realm, so we would appreciate authorization in terms of, you know, helping to get the specs drawn up as well.
Sure, we'll do that in motion.
So just for clarity, this is to move forward, it's not the final vote to do it? Is that what I'm understanding here?
Well, I thought we'd make the final vote the next meeting as to who, as to which company.
I'm just asking for clarity for the motion, so.
The motion is to authorize administration to develop specifications and advertise it, right?
Right. Add the belt section and that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Polakowski, for the gym floor to move forward to get specs in, pricing and that sort of thing for next voting meeting?
And advertise it.
And advertising? Any more questions or comments?
I just want to thank Charlie, Lee and Tim for all the legwork they did. When this first started, we didn't know anything about gym floors, and now, you know, we know a lot. So they, they've been looking around, calling people athletic directors and seeing who does what, so, thanks.
I'd like to make that motion now, but.
Well, we have a motion, a second on the floor, so we have to wait till we vote.
Oh, okay, you just didn't vote, did you?
No.
Oh, I said you did vote.
We have a motion, a second. Any more comments or questions on the motion that, doing the gym floor?
I don't think so.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Polakowski. Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Bent?
Yes, motion passes eight to one.
I'll finish it what I have and then let Ken go.
Well, then David has his.
All right.
I'm forgetting, can we just?
Most, most of my report was actually covered in the curriculum and staffing proposal we discussed earlier. Just to let you know, preparations are underway for the annual administration of the PSSA. In addition to student preparedness, faculty, staff and administration, I've been trained in administration and security measures that are necessary during the administration of a high stakes test such as this. An item that was not on the agenda is the revision of policy 918, and we're going to ask you to post this revision tonight. Very simple revision on this policy, it's the Title I Parent Involvement Policy, and it seems like every time federal monitoring is scheduled, they ask us to change a few words in this policy, and that's certainly the case again this year. Dr. Scott's preparing for the federal monitoring, which will happen during the latter part of May. Basically, we're changing wording, because we no longer have schools that are in corrective action, school improvement or restructuring, they're now referred to as focus or priority schools. So we need to change that language and then we need to update the language so that we're meeting the current statute in terms of the steps we need to be taking in the event that one of our schools would be listed as a focus or priority school in terms of making those improvements. So basically, the, the changes are just language to bring us up to speed with the, the new Pennsylvania accountability program, which changed to no child left behind. So we're gonna entertain a motion to post this revision, and then we'll get it voted on in 30 days.
Need a motion, please?
So, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions or comments?
Public comment.
Public comment? Roll call, please?
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Bent?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
And the last item I have, it's recommended that the board employ Mr. Daniel Boring as a, a health and physical education teacher to be assigned at the starting salary D1, beginning with the 2015, 2016 school year.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel, questions? Public comment? Roll call, please?
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Bent?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
And that concludes my report, sir.
Solicitor's report?
The only report I have is the motion that's before you.
It's recommended that the board authorize the appointment of Kelly Ryle, Nell Barna, Associates of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, to provide professional real estate valuation services for the tax assessment litigation for property identified as Scottdale Housing LP, tax map number 30-02-06-0-287, 30-02-06-0-391, and 30-02-06-0-600, and also known as 210, 226, and 232 South Broadway, Scottdale Borough, West Moreland County, as follows. Preparation of complete appraisal, $2,800 and $250 per hour for litigation testimony.
Need a motion, please?
One more.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions or comments?
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Bent?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Alt?
Two things, first one's a question. I might have missed it somewhere along the line, but one of the parents called and asked me if there's plans to put an autism, autism support group at the middle school.
There are no plans to do that at this time. The, the, the plan is that those students would either attend Clallion Heights, Clareview or Northwest Human Services Autism School. If you'd have that individual give either myself or Mr. Clara a call, we'd be happy to discuss that with them.
And then lastly, I just want to make that motion that we fund the ERIPs for not only this new group of teachers, but the past group that has remained unfunded.
No, the, the last group is funded.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
I beg to differ with you, Jim, though there are several, there are a couple teachers that, it's not funded.
No, it is funded.
You, you don't, there's not 525,000 that's not funded?
It's in our, it's in our committed fund balance, yes it is. You guys took care of that seven years ago.
No, 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 that was Dr. Feig that did that. She, one batch, there was another batch after that that was not funded.
No, we, we have that.
I think if you go back and check, Jim, you'll find that I am correct.
I will check and I, I think, I think we are correct.
To the tune of about 500 and some thousand dollars. Oh, yes, they're not funded. The total cost is about 1.5 million dollars.
Disagree. So we have a motion from Mr. Alt, do you want to state that motion again?
Yeah, Mike, I can state that. I'd like to have that the, that we fund the teachers' ERIPs, not only this group, but if it turns out that I am right, also the past group, the last group before this.
Could you get that Peggy?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a second?
What does he mean by funded? That needs to be in his motion.
What do you mean by funded? So that it's in the motion?
Hmm?
What do you mean by funded, so that it's in the motion?
That it's allocated, it's in the spent portion of the fund balance. That's what I mean.
You mean moving it?
Not just hanging out there so that if we have the money, we spend it.
I think Ken means moving it from unassigned fund balance to committed fund balance. Right, I just mean add in the motion, right. Correct.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Now you have, you have 12 folks retiring and they're getting 13,000 per year.
For six years.
So for, for the 15, 16 budget, we're, we're gonna be budgeting 156,000 dollars.
No, I'm talking about totally funding.
Now, wait a minute, now.
Okay.
You, you take that amount of money for one year and multiply it by six, it's 936,000 dollars.
That is exactly correct. And then I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's 500 and some thousand for the past group.
I'll ask Mr. Calero to come in and sit down with me and, whoever the financial statement.
Okay, whichever.
I'll show him the committed fund balance.
Whoever's hanging out there.
Right.
Move it from the one.
If there is anybody who didn't get put in there, we'll, we'll make sure we make the adjustment.
Do we have a second?
It's true, you do need a second. You have to call it three times.
Any more, a second?
One more.
I find it very interesting that this board would approve, given the money, but won't approve spending the money. Very interesting.
I'll just make my comment, I voted no last time, because in my opinion, if the business manager isn't smart enough to do that, then he shouldn't be in that position. That's why I don't think this needs to be done, but I, that's why I voted no last time against it, so.
In rebuttal to that, Mike, putting your faith in someone else may be the wrong thing to do. At Penn Hills, you see where the business manager's at, sitting on the sideline, suspended.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I don't know who that person is at Penn Hills, but I don't put all the blame on him. Yes, he's contributor, contributory negligent in the position, but also there is the leadership that was there.
Mm-hmm.
And also, I want to, I'd like to know who the accounting firm is that has been auditing them, because in, in the auditing standards, and I'm an old auditor, there's a thing called going concern provision, and auditors have to look at that. And if there's a going concern about whether the organization can continue, the auditors are to bring it up, even if they feel strongly enough that they should state it in their audited financial opinion, a going concern for Penn Hills should have been stated somewhere along the line. So somewhere also their auditing firm dropped the ball too, if they are in that bad a shape.
My opinion about this here, it's not really clear yet whether this money's been put back for the older ones in the past or not, to get clarification from that gentleman. I can't support something that we really know.
Well, there was a.
I mean, his fans telling you.
Wait, wait, in, in our, in our budget materials that I handed out, I, I gave you an outline of the committed, assigned and unassigned fund balance. Now that committed part was what was set aside for the early retirees in past programs. Now what we'll check is to make sure that all of them that are on that list from the past are completely committed, and I believe they are, but we'll, we'll certainly double check that.
If they weren't committed, Jim, they would have to be coming out of the current budget and it's not.
Well, that 304, we're, we're paying out 304,000, I think, $500 for the current E-RIP group, and that's in the budget. It was in the budget for this current year, it's in the budget for next year, and now we're gonna adjust the mon, the number from eight to 12 for the new group. And there's a schedule, and the, you know, they've been, the district's been keeping track of that schedule, so there was an amount set aside, and every year that amount gets amortized down from committed for that program, so, but we'll, we'll, we'll double check that.
There were four teachers that retired in 2013.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and they're not funded.
We'll double check that.
Okay.
Any citizens' comments? Seeing none, any other board members have anything?
I think Dr. Scott has a comment.
In my presentation earlier, I referenced.
The school districts in Pennsylvania that have a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students and outperform South Moreland according to the district profile score, there are three of them. The first one is on the bottom of page one, that's Bradford area. Second one is about two-thirds of the way down of the second page, Chambersburg area. And the third district is on page seven, third of the way down, Northeast School District. Again, those districts have a higher percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged and they outperform South Moreland on the district profile. Those three districts out of 500 in the Commonwealth. Anybody else have anything else? There's also just pointed out that we should state for the record that the motion did not receive a second, so the motion failed for funding the E-RIP, and the motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Beistel, second by Mrs. Rhodes, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Before you go, is, is anybody going to the West Moreland I U legislative press?
I am.
Then I'll, I'll go, sign me up, I'll go with you, Doc. Anybody else coming?
Yeah, Levi usually, yes, so. Anyone who's interested in going to that, make sure you let Peggy know about it and we'll get you signed up.
Is anybody on the end of that?